The time is 4:30 PM. Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting, January 2022, is called to order. I'd ask those in our audience this evening, if you have not signed in, please do so on the clipboard by the door. Before we leave, I ask everybody, please put their phones on vibrate. Rule call of members, Daniel?
Councilor Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Marcraft is absent, and Councilmember Steve Foster is absent, and Mayor Rick Frasier.
Here. I want to welcome each and every one of you this evening, those in our council chambers, also those joining us by Zoom this evening. And please remember, our city council meetings are rebroadcast on Wednesday evenings on Channel 14. Just two or three announcements for the next couple of weeks. Monday, February 14th, Valentine's Day, then Monday, February 21st, as President, State, City Hall Offices will be closed that day. And Tuesday, February 22nd, 4:30 PM, is our next city council meeting here at the Council Chambers. Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for a flag for meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is citizens' comments. I see no one in the audience who can comment. I don't know if somebody has a comment. Item number three is agenda additions or deletions. Any additions or deletions? Councilor Strand.
I'd like to add communication about water.
Please. What's the terminology here?
Communication.
Okay. Item number 15, communications. Any other additions or deletions?
Motion second.
Second? Motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I'll read. Item number four A is approval of minutes of the council meeting of January 25th, 2022, and those are placed on your desk here this evening. Item number four B is approval of council cable listing. Four C, one is staff report from the police chief, which is in your packet. Item number four C two is department report, which is in your packet. Item number four C three is financial report in your packet. And item number four D is outdoor sales license for our auto sale, Javani Calal Martinez. Is there a motion? Second? Motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All is the same. Motion carried. Item number five is Pelican Rapids/Air Hard Community Fund Split. We have Samantha and Weschel Meyer from West Central Initiative with us this evening. So.
Thank you.
Turn it over to you.
So you, the City of Pelican Rapids, have a community foundation that's held at West Central Initiative, and that was previously overseen by the EDC, Economic Development Commission, which has, as I understand, not been meeting regularly. And in order for Air Hard, who has a subaccount under the Pelican Rapids Area Community Fund, to access those funds, they would have to have it approved through the advisory board, which in the past was at EDC. Since they're not operating, Air Hard and the City of Pelican Rapids do not currently have access to those funds for use, because you need an advisory board to make recommendations and spend that money out. So Air Hard is looking at doing a project, they'd like to have access to those funds. I met with their council last month. They're interested in overseeing their account independently as a council there, and they think they can do that. We went through all the details there. So I'm here, first off, to request approval from your crew as representatives of the non-existent EDC, to have that separation of the Air Hard account to be overseen by the Air Hard council, and I'll answer any questions about that.
Yeah, in the packet, as I provided you guys, so you kind of had an idea of the setting, how this was set up and everything, there was a copy of the operational guidelines, about five or six or seven pages, to kind of see back in 2001, how this was established, what it was for, all that type of thing. Then there was also a prospectus, a prospectus in there, as well as a couple confidentiality ideas, copy that, so you kind of see, so we can talk about that stuff, and a listing too, advisory board listing. So, again, the guidelines and the prospectus, just to kind of give you guys an idea of how this was set up, how Pelican and Air Hard were both a part of this. I was on the EDC for years, and a few years, and when we were doing all these things and meeting regularly, there was a representation from Air Hard, somebody from Air Hard was on that board for a period of time, but then, all of a sudden, we got to a point where it was difficult to find somebody from Air Hard to be on EDC, which is the advisory board for the community funds. And so, Air Hard kind of got lost in the mix, because there was no representation, nobody from Air Hard on the board. And so, oftentimes, the Air Hard, as their councils would change over, they had no clue that there was a community fund that had Air Hard money in it, and I believe it's a sub-fund from the Pelican Rapids Community Fund. So, in a sense, because it's difficult in this day and age to get somebody from Air Hard on there, I think it makes sense to separate it out, let Air Hard take care of their own funds, and administer their own funds. Of course, they're going to have to establish their own advisory board down there, and I mean, you've already talked to them and figured out how that's going to be down there in Air Hard. But to get the separation of the funds, we felt that, you know, really to come before the city council, and have the city council take action, I believe, that makes a motion and approves the separation of the funds, that Air Hard can establish their own advisory board and deal directly with West Central Initiative. Does that sound right?
Yes. Yep. Thank you.
So, any questions after all that?
No more questions? There's no detrimental effect to the fund as a whole, is there?
No. Nope.
No, because you guys couldn't use Air Hard's funds anyway.
Right.
The EDC would act, actually, what is the advisory board, and they would, so Air Hard would come with the EDC, present their case or state their case, they're using some of them funds, and it's just, it's been too hard to do it that way. Now, the EDC, as I said, that is trying to get up and going again, and we expect that they will sometime in the near future, but it's just been, it's been difficult to get that regularly, that board stay active, you know, consistently, which creates a problem for EDC, or the Air Hard Fund and the Pelican Rapids Community Funds also.
So what would be the proper language for a motion?
Council approves the separation of the Air Hard subaccount from the Pelican Rapids Area Community Fund to be managed by Air Hard Community.
So. Is there a second? We have a motion, and it's second. You got all that, Daniel?
No, it's like.
Ooh, that's the hard part.
Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All is the same. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then I was also hoping to address you tonight, to see if there would be interest from the council in overseeing the Pelican Rapids Community Fund in the interim until EDC maybe chooses to take it over again, if you decide to do that route. So there is currently $170,220, $170,220.35 in that account. Again, without an advisory board overseeing that account, those funds are hard for your community to access. Your, Mr. Solga included in your packet, the information on the fund. So this is outlining how those funds can be used in your community. There is a revolving loan fund, but there's also opportunity to do grants to the community. So it's our hope at West Central Initiative that your community benefits from that fund through having an active advisory board that can make grants from that fund. So I'm here also to explore if that makes sense for the council, and answer any questions about what that relationship looks like, and how you.
Does it require another meeting, or can that be held during council meetings?
So we talked a little bit about that, too, Mr. Solga and I. In your packet is the confidentiality agreement. As a part of that, loans are a confidential process. So being that council is an open meeting form, if you were to be looking at approving a loan request, we talked that it may be a separate subcommittee, that's maybe two council members, so it doesn't have to be an open meeting form to go through some of the confidential nature items. If you were to approve a grant to the community, that's, grant information is public, and that can be done at council meeting.
Yeah, so what I was kind of thinking was, because of the private nature of it, until it's a matter that needs to come before the city council, I thought maybe would be good to establish a subcommittee and use the portfolio concept that we already have, built in to the council, and so maybe it was just a matter of adding two elected officials, and in their portfolio, it would be community fund, subcommittee or whatever. And then that way, we could just have that ongoing, should, in the future, you know, it becomes another opportunity, or another time when the EDC is inactive, that subcommittee would already be established by the portfolio in the council. That way, it keeps it private, because obviously, the whole idea behind the EDC, and the reason for them advising on the community funds is because of the private component of it. So does it make sense to do it under the portfolios, as opposed to setting a separate advisory committee?
This is EDC money, right?
This is the community money, it's not the EDC money. It's the community's money, but the EDC with West Central Initiative oversee it. And again, that's what the guidelines and stuff that you were given kind of lay out for you. The EDC can't, on their own, allocate funds for anything in Pelican Rapids. They are the advisory committee, they hear the requests, and then basically send them requests with their recommendations, in a sense, to West Central Initiative. West Central Initiative's board actually is the final say over who gives those funds, other than the way it's been working in the past, other than the grant program. The grant program, because the grant program was put in place, and the way it's been done in the past was, you know, you can do up to $1,000 grant request, and again, it's an application, laying it all out. An example would be the Faces of Change publication, that book. They came to the EDC with the request, but that, whenever we've had a grant request, Chamber did the same thing. That was basically passed through, I believe, the city council, and then we just sent down to West Central Initiative, the city's council, approval of those small little grant requests, and West Central Initiative then checked out that, you know, that request or that check, whatever, to the entity. That's why it's kind of worked in the past when it comes to that grant, because it's such a small amount. But the community funds themselves, the council have never been involved in EDC, with West Central Initiative being the final say. Case in point would be Jason's death, when he asked for that gap financing. The EDC heard it, the EDC sent them down to West Central Initiative, they reviewed it, they actually partnered with the community funds to give the gap financing that Jason needed to get over. The council was not involved in it.
Where does the money come from?
The money, the $170,000, it used to be more than that, but the $170,000, as I understand it, back in 2001, there was a combination of the city business community, and not just Pelican Rapids business community, I think Otter T. Power was involved in this, and they all kind of got together, established a pocket of money, and then, at some point, they decided that, I don't even know who the overseers of the fund was, the dollars were, so it might have been prior to 2001, I think it was, it was in the 90s, but there was this pocket of money, and because, I know Dave Aubert was a big part of this back then, he was at the bank. When those dollars were established, there was some oversight, but then, you know, they were getting older, they were just putting up there, repaying whatever, and was excited in 2001 to put this under the oversight of West Central Initiative, thus establishing the real community fund that we have today. And since 2001, part of that establishment was also to establish that the EDC, that the EDC was going to be the advisory committee of it, so they were somehow involved in those discussions. And maybe that was when EDC was formed, that's all, but they've always been the ones established by the guidelines to administer, or oversee, I should say, oversee the community fund.
So your recommendation would then have a community fund in two council people's portfolio, and they would participate in this until the EDC is up and running?
Yeah, whenever the EDC is not active enough to address requests, that it could fall on this as a subcommittee.
Councilor Strand. Would this involve meetings out of town, or just years away?
Well, it possibly could. In the past, when it actually became time for somebody to come and request money from the EDC, they always came to EDC meetings, and it was always in town. So it doesn't necessarily mean out of town, and it would be, more than likely, most times would be after hours.
Is there any question for anything right now?
Nothing.
I'm not aware of anything either, but we have heard just feedback through our work within the community, that the people maybe know that this fund exists, and they feel like WCI is preventing them from accessing that money. So I think there's maybe some interest in the community, as far as we can tell.
Will we postpone this for a month, just to think about it? I don't know, if you guys are surprised by this, as I am, or what, but I knew the EDC wasn't meeting, and they haven't been active for quite some time.
Yeah, and I think, I think tonight, you know, we wanted to get this out there. Whether you guys decide on this part of it tonight, really just the whole idea for having this discussion tonight, separate those funds, so Air Hard can get on with.
And we are ready to.
And you've done that. So unless you guys think differently, to wait till the next council, we can give you guys some time, just a couple of weeks, I don't think that's an issue, so that you guys can think about it a little bit. That's fine by me, as long as it's fine with West Central Initiative.
Would you like to do any comments?
Yeah, I'll move that, so we postpone this for a minute, because I have some time to think about it.
Second? Okay, motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same?
She doesn't have to come back, does that do?
If you want me here, I can be here. If you have questions that come up in the meantime, Don can send them through to me. If you have questions right now while I'm here, I'm certainly happy to explain more about how the fund process works, and.
Okay, thank you, Samantha.
Thank you. Yes. Have a great evening.
So, usually, the EDC is talking about getting back together. Can we have them back together, or how long is that going to take? Yeah, I've had some communications with, there are some business owners that want to be on that advisory board. Some of them have been on there in the past, and so they were in the process of gathering up the board that was going to be the EDC board, and they were going to invite me down to kind of explain, because a lot of them haven't been involved in the community funds, the rehab loan program and all that stuff. So I told them, just let me know when you want me to come down to a meeting, and I will basically share all this information with you guys, as I understand from when I was on there. And so, they were working towards doing that, and then, one of the main people that was putting that stuff together again, and trying to get them active again, left with the winter. So I imagine they'll pick it up again when that person gets back, and I hope that this spring, they will actually get active again.
God, wasn't that the EDC, the city council?
No, that's the EDA.
Oh, okay.
Good for them.
I just asked Samantha if she could take a couple of minutes and explain more about how it works.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah. So.
Do you want to hold the mic a little bit closer to the speaker?
Yeah. Is this better?
Why is it in the meeting?
So, West Central Initiative, we have over 217 funds that we work with now, so this is common practice for us. Oftentimes, groups come and form community funds through West Central Initiative to have a 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. That's what we offer as a part of that package. So your community can make donations to your community fund and get a tax receipt. So if you're looking to do some projects, or grow that $170,000 that you have, you can work with West Central Initiative. We can help put together some marketing pieces, brochures for you, collect donations from the community, we'll process them, send tax receipt letters out. Now, with the funds sitting in that fund, when you have somebody who's interested, say you put together a grant program, say council was to oversee that in a meeting, you would just record in meeting minutes that you approve $1,000 grant to whatever it is that you might be funding. Those meeting minutes come to West Central Initiative, and then we cut the check and we send it off to a nonprofit, a school, government entity, or a church. So that's where the grant process is kind of specific to those areas, and if, we have some interesting funds set up, so we have another group that we work with that has a humanitarian fund, where they're helping folks with utility bills or medical bills, and we kind of work around some of that, like we won't pay directly to, the person to pay their utility bills will pay to the city to pay the utility bills, that type of thing. So there's a lot of flexibility in how you arrange that fund, so there's some degree of options there. The revolving loan fund, I think Mr. Solga explained a little bit about that process, and it would look a little bit different than having it happen here in a full council meeting, just because of the private nature of it. But I can send a little PowerPoint presentation that kind of outlines how, the ins and outs of the funds too, and what WCI does versus the fund board, but really, we take care of all the backend stuff. We ask that you remain active as a council, that's one of the benefits, is that council will be active. We ask that annually, you sign that confidentiality agreement, which is in your packet this evening. We ask that you maintain a roster, which is also in your packet this evening, and then meet with West Central Initiative once a year to hear updates, and we can answer your questions. So I think that's all that's really required of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You guys don't, it's something that typically the members of the EDC do on an annual basis, and that's the difficulty in the council as a whole being the advisory board. How do you sign a confidentiality agreement when everything that would come before you would be in a public setting? It's not very confidential. So that's why the subcommittee portfolios were not formal, the council makes more sense. If, you know, honestly, when the EDC is not active, that some action needs to be looked into because of the request.
Any other questions? You said something about tax deductions, or?
Yeah. So if you wanted to donate to the Pelican Rapids Community Fund and sent your $100 check in for the Pelican Rapids Community Fund, WCI then will send you your tax receipt letter that you can take to your tax appointment and get your deduction.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the pool is a subaccount to the Pelican Rapids Community Fund. It was a subaccount that was created so people could donate on a tax deductible basis to the pool.
We had the pool fund, we had the baseball, the lighting of the baseball field, we had the streetlights down the town, we had a playground fund, the school's got a subfund.
There are a lot of funds happening in Pelican Rapids, so we're working very active with those groups.
Any other questions? Would you charge a fee on these, Dan?
So each fund does have a fee. I would, I have to look back at what yours is at, they're either half a percent or 1%. So it was determined when your fund was set up, but it's the average daily balance of the assets in the account collected once a year.
So what determines if it's half of the channel or percent?
That was determined when your fund was set up. It's based on the activity of the fund. So again, it's already being assessed to the asset sitting in that account, so there is a fee being administered for WCI service on that account.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thanks. We got item number six, Annual Fire Department Report. We have the fire chief, Trevor Stieves, with us this evening. Report is also in our packet.
All right, thank you for having me. Fire call report, you have a sheet that looks like this, it says fire call report, upper Shows all the entities that we serve, all nine townships, City of Air Hard and the City of Pelican. We had a total of 65 rural calls this year. City of Pelican Rapids had 32, which landed us about, almost exactly where we were last year. We had four mutual aid calls. Total calls were 101, which are up about 20. 20 calls over and above average. Our high before was like in the mid-80s, and we've been as low as like 52 calls in a year. So a lot of that was driven with medical, medical lift assist. I think you guys have had discussions with ambulance service on how busy they are, you know, have a good understanding of the pressures and the needs put on them. So when an ambulance isn't available, the next best thing besides Mr. Statem is us. So they call us to help do a lift assist, or do what we can do. We're not necessarily there doing IVs and stuff like that, we're not a medical unit, but we're there to help out until the ambulance gets there. A lot of times, it's a lift assist, get somebody off the floor, get somebody in the ambulance down the stairs, stuff like that. So we had a lot of that this year. We have one in particular that stretched our limits, but we got through it. So that was our total number of calls, at 101, which in talking to other departments around, is kind of an upswing to calls. Most departments seen a good 20% increase, and that's probably where we are, 25%, 20%. So the City of Pelican Rapids, I just kind of quickly, last night went through, they had alarm calls, these are fire alarm, carbon dioxide alarm, kind of a call for service, might just be somebody thinks they smell natural gas somewhere. And so they call us, and we go out and drive around and look around and see if we can see anything obvious or imminent, so that kind of falls in there. We had six of those, we had one accident in town, motorcycle accident, fires, we had three legit fires, 19 medical calls, lift assists, one missing person, and two gas or power line calls, where a power line went down, or gas leak, call for gas leak. So that rounded out to 32 calls for the city. In comparison to the rural calls, the rural calls were 74, but that's considering everybody that's not City of Pelican Rapids. Their alarm calls, gas, power, something like that, were at 12. They had 28 fire calls in rural setting. 10 auto accidents, or call for service on an auto accident. We don't necessarily always have to cut somebody out or do something like that. We don't necessarily always have to cut somebody out or do something like that. Sometimes it's assisting, state patrol, deputies, ambulance in blocking after seeing to make it safer, cleaning up afterwards, something like that. So it's another call for service. So we had 10 of those and then medical, lift assists, missing person, just helping people, we had six of those in the rural. We run, you hear me mention all this stuff, that's just a portion of what we do. You know, it's, I always am not surprised at the calls that we get. For the area we have and the calls that we get, it's very interesting when you think you've seen it all. Even like Maplewood State Park usually gives us two or three medical calls in the fact that somebody got thrown off a horse and the ambulance service can't get back on a trail, so they, we use our UTVs and stuff like that, our equipment. So it works hand in hand very well and the members are willing to do it and they're very proficient at it, so I guess that's why they call us. Any questions on our calls and our type of calls? Of course with our calls, you know, the number of hours put into it went up to, I think we were up about 280 hours, but that's what you call man hours. So if I have 20 people show up for one hour call, that's 20 hours. Does that make sense? The person doesn't get charged for 20 hours, they get charged their flat fee. And with that, Don and I had talked about, right now our rate is 500 and then 200 per hour after that. We felt that at this time we don't need to increase. Other areas are, we're all about the same. Ranges from $400 to $300 the second hour or 600 to 200. In talking to other departments, we're kind of right in the middle. So I'm comfortable with it. Don felt, yeah, we're good with it. It's been a couple of years, but you know, it seems to be working fine. Other stuff, we had our annual city relief association meeting with the mayor and the clerk and the relief association board yesterday afternoon, reviewed our audit that was prepared by Carlson's. Our audit goes over all of our financials, we're bound to do that every year. And now you have to remember that this is a 20 audit, even though we're, now we're in 22, this is a 20 audit. So they're always, you know, you're behind, we're collecting information now for the 21. It's just kind of the same as what the city goes through. With that, was reviewed with all of our assets in our funds. Our funds are held with Gary Lage and he was not able to make it. We're going to have another meeting with him when he gets back from visiting with clients down south. We felt we could make a trip down there and he could visit with us, but we shouldn't do that. With that, with our liabilities and our investments that we have, leaves us with a surplus of $146,000. Right now we're at $3,300 per year service. The last time that was increased was '19, so we're at four years since we've increased it. The recommendation at the board meeting yesterday was to go up $300 to $3,600 and with that still leaves us about $80,000 in, to the good that we have in reserve. So we're not, you know, over flexing that at all. That increase of 300 would need to be approved by you guys.
I didn't, you backed up for a couple seconds?
Sure. Okay, so when we do our audit, at the end of our audit always shows what are liabilities, so what we owe, if the fire department shut down tomorrow and we had to pay out the members, this is what is owed and this is what we have in assets. And would you subtract our liabilities from our assets and we are left with $146,000 of reserve money? Does that make sense? Okay. So then by increasing it 300 more dollars, still leaves us around $80,000 in reserve. And then that would go from 33 to 3,600. And like I said, the last time we did it was four years ago.
Do we have to?
Yeah, yeah, it has to be a motion and passed by.
Do we approve the rate?
Increase to 300?
Increase to 300. Second, motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Gary, not all in favor, she can probably say aye. Aye. What was the saying, motion period?
Thank you very much. Couple other items, we will be having our annual meeting with the fire department and the townships and the cities, welcome to be there, next Wednesday, the 16th at 6:00 PM at the fire hall. And that was, went out in the packet with the report and the bills for the township, so they have that. And we always try to, we always get that meeting in before their March annual meeting. This is also a, last year on our 10-year contract with our townships. Don, we didn't have any changes?
No. No changes, just advisory dates and stuff to send out, letters and new contracts to be considered by each one of the townships that we serve.
Do we have, is that, do you post it up yet?
I haven't posted it, but I'm posted tomorrow, so.
That is also a 10-year?
Yes.
Okay, so 10-year contract, 10 years, that puts me down the road to about eight years, I won't be a part of this. So.
Townships can agree to, they can't go beyond 10-year agreement, service agreement?
So we'll see, you know, if they have any concerns or anything, you know, haven't heard. We hope everything is going well for them. We try to provide the best service we can and I feel we've been doing that, so we'll see. Also, as far as 21 last year, you guys approved the purchase of another UTV and trailer that we paid for by our fundraising through our relief association, through our letter that goes out with Lewin Press and a couple other events. So we were able to purchase that and get it in service. It's been a nice asset to have. Like I say, that was no added cost on the budget, that was all paid for with funds. We are in the process right now of replacing, it's called, truck's called Wildland 2. It's a pickup style F-350. We have the chassis, truck's been painted, we're waiting for the utility box to come in and then that'll be put on and that truck will be put in service this spring, time for Wildland fire season. We do, we'll have the sale of the old truck. Not exactly sure what that truck is going to be valued at, maybe, you know, between $5,000 and $8,000. Would like to get approval from you guys that any gap in the funding that we have to finish that truck, we could use those funds. If we don't need it, it would just go back to the city or fire department funds to pay down any other debt. But if we do need it, I'd like to get preapproval that if we need to replace the skid unit in it or something like that.
You ready to let Don?
Yeah, I'll let Don know the funding and, you know, how if we sell it through the auction or whatever we do. Last time we sold a truck, I advertised it on Craigslist hoping to get nine, we got 12 out of it, so start high.
Second, caution second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Gary, not all in favor, she can probably say aye. Aye. What was the saying?
Okay, thank you. And lastly, want to thank Jamie Turd Teberg, just retired last week, 20 years of service. He will be greatly missed. Very good, knowledgeable guy. He took our cold water rescue to the level that it is today and he's been to be commended for that, so, yeah, greatly missed.
Can I just, I'm curious, like, do you get a gas smell, call, everything? Do you send the same signal via doors or like, do people go out?
When we get a call, everybody carries pager and we have another service on our cellphones called Act 911. Everybody gets a call, all active members will get that page. Who's ever around, just like any other call, will respond at the fire hall and we will determine what we need for vehicles. We don't dump the whole station and take eight trucks out. We might just say, you know, we'll take this, two or three trucks and head over this way. We had one call this summer way up on Tansom Township, right at the intersection of 32 and 34. Somebody driving by thought they smelled natural gas. I don't know how they determine between natural and propane, but... So knowing that there's not a gas line that goes out there, we still went out there because if you do nothing, that's, we can't, we can't do nothing. So we went out there, investigated it, checked some areas, checked a couple residents that thought, well, maybe that propane in their tank is leaking and things were fine, but that's the age that we live in is drive-by 911s. And they see something, want to call it in, but will never stop and help or investigate. So they're just moving along. The police department gets it all the time, we get it, you know, probably, you know, 20% of our calls are that way. You know, they see a fire, so we go out there and the person has a brush pile of fire behind their house, well, it makes it look like their house is on fire. They have a permit, they're fine, we go back. But now you just took however, you know, 20 people, you know, it's time. So it's what we do and it's how it's been always, so.
Thank you. Thank you for watching.
Thank you. No, no, right now we're down to 21, so we're short three. So with Jamie and with Brian's retirement and Jamie and Steve Hybe, those three, of course those guys are all, you know, 80% guys too and that's hard to fill, but we are actively trying to recruit and...
So do you have a waiting list?
No, no, no. So yeah, we would take applications, you know, see what we get. Did you have questions, Steve?
Yeah, I got a couple questions. With all the medical, and I don't know what you guys have for medical training.
Basic first aid.
Okay.
You know, so we have AD, CPR, you know, we can stop some bleeding, stuff like that. Typically when we get called, it's a lift assist to help somebody up or if they fall and have broken a hip, stabilize them, that they're okay until an ambulance gets there. Then once an ambulance get there, we help put them on the board and get them out. Because if an ambulance shows up with two people and they got to take somebody, you know, average size nowadays out and there's steps, it's very hard to do, especially in the winter. So that's, so we are not, not a medical unit and nor do we want to become a medical unit.
That's what I'm getting at and is it sustainable for you guys to keep doing this?
I, to be blunt, I'm very impressed that the members show up when we keep getting those calls, especially to the same resident, local resident that was abusing the system. They kept showing up and I just could not believe it. I'm like, thank you. But I, they kept showing up and as bad as that situation was, they did. So I guess your sustainability question is, yes, I think we can do it, but we're not going to be running on medical calls like Ringdol does. You know, Ringdol goes on, you know, four or 500 calls a year, so.
Do you see this increasing?
With the health of America, yes. No, no, to be honest, you know. You know, all it takes is for someone to fall in their house and they're, if they're in their 80s and their spouse is in their 80s, they can't get them up. So with the baby boomers, you know, coming through, this is our big wave, this is going to, I think the norm. We've always done it, but it's usually been associated with an accident, if that makes sense. Like, you know, so we had somebody fall in their basement down the steps or the steps broke and they broke their back. Well, we're there to help the ambulance get them out. We provide manpower, you know, that's one thing we bring. So that and people get themselves in precarious situations and we help get them out or just do the lift assist. You know, you take a look at your own house, if you were, if you're upstairs and something happens, they got to bring you down in a stretcher, is that very easily done in your house? Not a lot of houses it is. You know, so you take two medical personnel, you know, they might, it doesn't matter if they're staffed with a male or female, whatever, it's just, that's a big task put on those people, so.
Any other questions?
Trevor, you only send a certain amount, you don't send all eight trucks to a lift assist?
Yeah, thank you Brian for pointing that out. So yeah, what we'll do, and especially in the winter when it's cold, is we'll take like our suburban, so we're not running a truck, we'll just put four or five in there and go. But there's, there might be another four, five, six that are waiting at the fire hall. But yeah, thanks, that's a good point, that it's not like a fire call or a gas call or alarm call where, yeah, we're taking, you know, five trucks, six trucks just to do a lift assist.
How closely you communicate, work with the ambulance service?
It seems like we work, have worked a lot with them. We just did a training last month with them, they brought their ambulance in and we go back over it to how to run their power cots, where some stuff is located. Once in a while, like at a car accident or something, one of my firefighters might end up driving an ambulance to the hospital if both of the ambulance people are working on the patient. So that's, it's very infrequent, but the frequency has increased, if that makes sense.
Since Ringdol's been in here, you know, talking about the situations they're facing, I've thought a lot about this. Because I was on an ambulance, volunteer ambulance thing. With you guys making those kinds of calls too, I've been wondering, you know, where we're going to end up with this, you know, as an ambulance person, you have a 300-pound person you got to carry down the stairs or up the stairs, I can see why they're calling the fire department.
Right, so it's, for us it's a catch 22 kind of because we cannot bill Medicare or anything like that or insurances for that. We do bill the resident, they, we have a minimum charge bill of 200. So if we come to your house and you need to lift up, we're going to send you a $200 bill, hopefully pay it.
Why doesn't it?
We can roll it over onto their taxes if they own the house, but if they're a renter, So every year we forego, you know, there's a lot of revenue, you know, that we don't collect, but I've seen this year we brought in almost 20, it was $19,000. Typically it's between 13 and 15, but that's an increase in fire calls too. But that increase in calls for service were not ones we got paid for. But it's one of those things where as a community and as the city that owns us, we're right in service, you know, you look at how much work Brian and Jeff do as a public service, they don't charge for their services, you know? We do. So I think if Jeff started charging, he'd be called a lot less.
Do you start the year with a clean book, I mean, do you just, at the end of the year, okay, we're 15,000 that didn't pay?
Like I said, if, the state of Minnesota has what's called reciprocity, so if you, if we go to a resident and they even had a fire and they want to pay their $700 fire bill, we can bring it to their township, if they're in a township or if they're in a city and the township brings it to the assessor's office, they'll pay it and then it goes on their taxes for the following year. Does that make sense? Yeah. But for a renter, no, it's not going to.
Do we need this?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's some of it, it's like a, you know, a water bill, whatever, I don't know if there's a point. I don't know if there's a point where you quit sending a bill because it's just the redundancy is they're never gonna pay it, so. Um, you know, and you, you cannot fund a fire department on fire calls, you know, or just an expensive necessity.
And like, for a water bill, we can charge a lot.
Exactly. Well, you know, I, I, I'm not gonna design, yeah, for us to deny services, um, I, I guess I'll let you guys decide that. I'll, I'll call you guys in the middle and you get to tell me. Any more questions?
Any more questions?
All right, thank you very much for all your support, appreciate it.
Let's go down to item number fifteen, communication.
Well, I, the water thing, I don't know exactly what happened, but Sunday morning, we didn't have water. And I learned a couple of weeks ago.
God, what a disaster.
I don't have it here. What was on Big Brother, the way it was? How can it matter? I'm not running, my, I don't, I don't know.
I was in Washington and I got a phone call. From, from the city of Pelican Rapids. Are you on the nine one one or are you on the?
Well, so, no, okay, so, so, um, we did have a department head meeting, uh, yesterday, I think it was yesterday. We all got together and we did a deep briefing on that. And we talked basically about communication. The people that did get the alerts that were sent out, like three of the five councilmen, is because you guys have never signed up for the smart nine one one system, which we've told everybody about multiple times. And we've encouraged community members to get on the system so we have notifications that go out, they get them. Having said that, there was a drop in getting the notifications out. I didn't know there was a problem with the water until Sunday morning when you sent me the text. And we've had those discussions, so we know how to do it better, right guys?
We do, we do, it was, it was, yeah.
Yeah, and, and part of it had to do with, I'm, I'm assuming here, the question of how late do you get, let it get before you send out communications so you can not wake people up? Um, you know, like, does everybody want to text or a phone call at two o'clock in the morning? Uh, and we had that discussion too, because I don't know if that played into the discussions of waiting until morning to let me know. But, uh, even in that case, some of the discussions were, you know, maybe we don't want to interrupt people's sleep, but I could still be available to send texts or communications nine one one or the alert system, uh, not nine one one, but the alert system notifications out at five o'clock in the morning. So people aren't really getting notified in the middle of the night, but very early, so they're aware. Or six o'clock in the morning, that's just something, you know, we, we've talked about. When do we want to send them on so it's not being really disruptive, but people are getting the word? It should have happened Saturday night and we, we had this discussion. So nine.
I got my first call at ten thirteen on Sunday morning.
Correct.
Sunday morning, yes.
And, and the reason was because by the time I knew about it and got in here to set up all them communications, it takes time.
Yeah, I called Don at seven fifty-five Sunday morning. I did not call him at ninety-four as this all was coming down. Hindsight, I probably should have, I didn't. I waited until morning because it was ten thirty, eleven o'clock. I didn't want to bother people. In hindsight, I will, just to get the action going earlier.
Yeah, I'm not blaming you about that, I just, I thought maybe you had, you would place a call and it'd be on Facebook or the website.
Then it would have been, as soon as, as soon as we heard about it.
Right.
And I put the messages together, they were on the website and on Facebook right away. And then it was, they were sent, I put them first, up first, and then I put them on the county wide or, yeah, the alert system. Because to be honest with you, Facebook probably is our, gets our most exposure because people aren't signing up for that, for that alert system, which is the best way of getting the alerts. But people haven't signed up, why didn't we sign up?
Or.
We signed up for something.
So before we had progress and then they went away from that.
This is a new one.
And this is a new one.
And council was all brought up on this, because I knew about this.
We signed up.
I signed up for one of them. So I encouraged the three councilmen that are not on, get on, so you keep the alerts. I'm not, I'm not, it's not a map, it's not a map.
Now, with these alerts, are we just gonna get the city stuff?
You can set it up that way.
Because I don't need the Amber Alert from Minneapolis or Saint Cloud or any of that other stuff.
You may get, you may get the tornado warning alert from the county, but you won't get the state stuff. The state stuff is, if I understand it right, the state stuff you may get on your cell phones because your cell phones have that emergency notification built into it. That was federal mandated stuff to the, to the cell services. But if you set this up, you would ju, I only send messages out based on a geographic area. The first one I didn't, but it's, it, they're set up now for the boil alert, the cancellation of the boil alert was all set up so that just city residents got it, nobody else.
I don't know, I've never gotten any.
If, if you have the app, you can set it up so it will follow you. So if you fly to South Dakota and something's going on there, it will follow you there. But it won't, if you're here, you're only gonna get Autochuck County or Pelican Rapids. Tornado, it's weather alerts basically.
And you don't even have to download the app, you just registering for it via the county website, telling them how you want to be alerted, whether you want a phone call, text message. And then that's, then you'll only get it from the city or the county, but from us, the city.
Within the last month, I got an email from them that wanted to, there was any changes I wanted made to notification.
I disabled that stuff on my phone because I got an Amber Alert for the state of Washington and I just shut that stuff off.
So, so if it was put out on Facebook, would you have gotten it?
No, I don't think so.
So then you don't do, so you went to got it that way?
Well, I, no, I, my wife goes to work. I said, look at Facebook, I mean, that's what they advertised the council. There was nothing and then all these other people were trying to figure out just their problem or whatever.
As soon as I knew about it, I started working on the notifications and it's not something that you can basically jump on right away and just do it. I really, what I do is I give, I set it up on the, the website and then Annalee takes the, the message. And it pretty much happened the same time. I got it done, I, and so I told her, go grab the notification and, and spit it out on Facebook and that's what she did. Within, within the time it was put on the website and the time it was sent out on Facebook was probably a matter of a minute or two.
Did you have to drive to town to do that?
I did in this particular case and I was on my way in when, 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 when you sent me the, the text.
Yeah.
And then, and then I, I talked to Brian and found out what was going on. I knew notifications were gonna have to be sent out. So I came, I started in the town, um, and so, uh, but in the future, I won't necessarily have to be. As a matter of fact, I'm set up now that if Brian calls me at ten o'clock at night, I will do it from home.
I wouldn't be so concerned about what hours you send it up because not everybody works the same hours.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
But also if people have their, their phone sitting by their bed and all.
They can put it, they can disable it somehow.
They can. And again, if, if I would have been contacted Saturday night, they would have went off Saturday night. Even if I would have had to come into town to do it, but I'm set up now, I wouldn't have, I don't have to do that.
But it has to be a phone call, not a text?
It could be a text, it could be an email, a text or a phone call. You can do all of the above or you can do one of them. You just gotta get registered. If you need help doing that, stop it, we'll get you on there. You mean, now here's the thing, Steve. Chelsea can register, your spouses can register and put your phone number in. Your, your, anybody that lives in town, your, your children can register if they live in one part of town and they want to make sure that their parents or their grandparents are notified and they live in town also. Your children can set up the account and just add your cell phone information to it. But not everybody has to have an individual account. A household can do it because this system is actually linked. And I think if you get on the county's website to register, you can find this out too. But this system is linked to the nine one one system too. You can put as much information into this system as you want. For instance, they ask who all is in your household, what's the numbers of the people in your household? Uh, do you have pets, who your pets vet may be, that type of the thing. Because the, the whole purpose of it is linked to the nine one one system. So if a call comes in from, or, uh, a nine one one, because you have, let's say, someone reported a fire at your house. So the fire, the nine one one system sends the fire department out or the police department to your house. That's linked to their system, so they're gonna be able to know who lives in that house. Are there any pets at that house? Because when they get there, your house may be in flames and, and nobody's, nobody's responding, you can't get there. But they know who all is in the house, if there's any pets in the house. If there's a situation where, uh, the, the, the county or the police department want to know there's a, there's an issue with your pet, but the, the people aren't there, they, the system tells them who your vet is. So they can take and get a hold of the vet and make, whatever the case may be. You can put as much of that information in the system as you want or as little as you want. Some people just say, I want texts and that's all I want. Some people may want the, may want nine one one to know who's supposed to be in the house, uh, if there's any pets in the house, that type of thing. It's as much detail as you want to put in there.
What happened to the information when it all comes to that?
The information, that, under code, code red, um, that, that could not be transferred over to this new system that the county put in place. So and it's, and, and, and the, and the information that you put in, it's, it's a similar information, it just couldn't be transferred. But this you can actually do more, more with and it is an easier system for us to kick notices out.
Okay, anything else on this?
Nothing in plan. Thank you for your service that night.
I thought you guys handled it as well as it could be handled. I mean, other than the communication thing, I mean, you guys got it fixed, you got issues involved and you guys were all out there, I checked out a couple of times and.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect.
Thanks, Brian. Item number seven is the library report and there was a report in here, we had, no one here to, that we can address this evening. I did get a couple, uh, emails, I'm gonna read to you, from our library board chair, Wayne Runnigan. And also the bill listing for the library was on your desk. The first one says, it was dated today, eight, two, twenty twenty-two. Mayor Frager and Daniel, library board got, member, got word from me he will not be able to attend this evening's city council meeting. Present the library reports, so there will not be anyone in attendance to give a summary of last evening's meeting. These are the items that are not included in the preliminary packet that was provided for the council packets. Bullet point one, city attorney was present to discuss personnel, record, storage. Bullet point two, library director, annual review was completed on February fourth, twenty twenty-two. Bullet point three, library board discussed moving forward with digitalizing additional Pelican Rapids preservation from nineteen twenty-four to nineteen seventy-seven with Minnesota Historical Society. Using dedicated funds available, the process would not begin until sometime after July twenty twenty-two. It takes about one year to complete. Bullet point four, authorize the board chair to draft a letter to the city council requesting the removal of the north entrance awning and also staining the exterior underside of the east entrance cedar siding. Signed Wayne Runnigan, library board chair. And this, uh, drafted letter, I'll read that also, it says, this was dated today, February eighth, twenty twenty-two. Mayor Frager and city council members, I have been directed by the library board to contact you regarding your consideration of the removal of the north entrance awning at the library. As you may recall, this was part of the bid process of the roofing project. However, it was not included due to the additional cost that would have added to the project. The awning continues to be a safety concern due to the icing that has caused some melt-in during the Miami winter weather. The second item was the staining of the cedar underside of the east open awning area of the library. Thanks for your consideration, Wayne Runnigan, Pelican Rapids Library Board Chair. Uh, Don or Danielle, did you have anything to add? We have, at this point, we don't know what the cost would be to remove that awning.
As I, again, I wasn't a part of that committee because I understand it from a comment that Mr. Runnigan made that, um, there was a number in the bid for the roof, but they didn't do it, or it wasn't done because that cost was really substantial. And so at this point, at some point, I think, uh, we would just have to, the council wants to, to look at getting quotes to take that off. That's the next step.
I'm getting what's wrong or what's going on.
Apparently melts their ices up and they have people fall and.
It causes ice and then people could potentially slip, people have slipped and fallen.
Oh, staff have those.
So they think, I believe that the point, and I don't want to speak for those anybody in the library, but I believe, um, they feel that moving, moving that thing would eliminate that habit.
I don't get it.
So it doesn't cost anything to get, uh, proposals to.
Sure.
Address of the deck down. Are you okay with everyone?
I'm assuming they have been modifying the existing roof that was just completed. I don't know, that's a lot of the difference.
Good question.
We'll have to look and see, figure out what the scope of work would be and then put a number to it, process it.
I don't see how removing that is gonna take a while either, I don't.
Don, you would reach out to contractors or?
I would reach out to Brian Olson who takes care of our facility, I think, having the video up there.
Any other questions regarding the library report?
Well, that, so for the staining of the underside of that, uh, east awning, is that something that?
I think again, it'd be worth, you know, having somebody look at, because you can't do it this time of year anymore. Have somebody look at giving this a quote, we'd have done it, sure, display.
And then do we have, regardless of what the costs are, if they come into control of the project at a pool or a mall, do we have money to do that? Is that something?
I, I think from the standpoint of, well, yeah, it really depends on, on, I think, uh, what the quotes would be. If they're small enough, we look at doing it, um, this year. The staining, I can't believe it's gonna be a big deal. And the removal of the awning may not be a big deal unless there's some, uh, additional work that has to be done again to the roof material and that type of thing along that side. Then depending on the cost, there may be a twenty twenty-three budget. Unless we want to carry that cost, but we got enough expensive to deal with this year, twenty twenty-two, so we'll see.
Is there a motion to approve the library report with Don, uh, looking into getting bits or do we give a statement? I'll make that motion. Second? Motion second? Discussion, discussion, discussion?
So the person that's going to look at it and could they say, advise on, you take that down, that's gonna hurt from the roof?
Well, I, I think that's part of what has to be looked into, if it's removed, how do we make it, you know, say, so there isn't any runoff or anything coming down? I, I, without, yeah, without having it looked into, I think that's part of what we're gonna have to address is removing it. How does that, does that create a pro, another problem with, with runoff? Or does it have to somehow be, you know, directed to the sides of, so it doesn't fall down on the entryway or whatever? That's gotta be looked into.
There's heat, you need to, that heat tape?
There was, I think. Is that still connected?
I thought that that was gonna be removed as part of the roof project.
Because of the situation?
Well, because of the fact that with the metal roof, you don't tend to have that type of an issue. But I, I don't know.
Any more discussion?
Ryan, up to some.
Carrying on, all in favor, saying if I was any eye?
Aye.
Close the sand, motion carried. Item number eight is explore Minnesota Tourism Affiliate Welcome Center Program Memorandum of Understanding twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six. And there was information in our packet also, Don, do you want to speak to that too?
Yeah, so tourism, uh, sent this, it's a new agreement for the Tourism Center down at Historic City Hall. And they have revised it a little bit, um, one of the things that, that they, they did was they added a section, um, on page two calling, uh, called vaccination slash. called vaccination slash testing requirements. And they wanted me to, when I called them to ask them about this a little bit, um, they wanted me to understand that whoever we have working, this is a new requirement, whoever we have manning that Historic City Hall down there, because it's a state tourism center designation, if you're, if you read the, the information, um, there is testing requirements now or there's a requirement that anybody that's manning that building down there has to be vaccinated. They have to provide, um, cert, there's a copy of their certification and whatever, to the city showing that they have the vaccination. If they're not vaccinated, they're required to do weekly testing. The city is responsible for paying for that testing if there's a cost associated with it. And so, um, and then, and then we have to monitor and track all that stuff, keep track of it. If they, they want to be able to, should they decide to do so, do an audit on their facility, the facilities approved, facilities, they just stop in and they say, let's see the records to verify who's down there, who's working down there, if they've been vaccinated or tested. And then.
Didn't they staff it?
Pardon?
Didn't?
Does, does the county staff say yes, but we're the owner of the building. We're the ones on the contract. So if the county basically has the same individual down there, it's our responsibility to still maintain the records that that person is vaccinated or they're getting tested weekly. I had a call into Nick Leonard today to find out, I don't even know, maybe the county already requires all this stuff with their staff, but, um, he never did get back to me, so it's still something I'm looking into. There is a, oh, first, let me say, I, when I talked to the individual at State Tourism, I asked them about, have they seen any cities drop out of the program because of it? Because that's an option for it. They said that there's sixty some different state tourism locations, and so far they had gotten about half of the agreements back, the contracts back. She didn't know of any, anybody that was considering dropping out, but, um, were the ones that she had heard from at this point.
So what's the downside of us not being affiliated with Explore Minnesota?
If we don't, yeah, if we don't sign the agreement, then basically we are pulling out of the, the agreement with the state to be a tourism site. And so the downside would be right now, all the information that goes out for Minnesota State Tourism nationally, and who knows, maybe even part of the world too, um, Canada, whatever. Pelican Rapids shows up as a tourism site, and so we lose all of that marketing, so to speak. But along those lines too, do we have any idea how many people have come to Pelican Rapids because of the fact that they see our information on the tourism? There's, nobody knows that information. She didn't have it. They don't, they don't track that, they don't know that. We're not asking people that come in the door, how did you find out about us? Were you just in the area or did you come here because we're a tourism site? Having said that, if somebody is in the area and they want to know where a tourism site is, they could maybe go and look and see what other things there are to do in, in Minnesota, they would know to come to Pelican as opposed to go to one of the other locations. So maybe it does play a role in when people come here looking for more information on tourism in Minnesota. So we would lose that. I also asked her, you know, what would happen if Pelican Rapids pulled out of it and then wanted to get back into it once this COVID effect went away? And she said that typically in the past, that's something that tourism really has to think about because they know this is a, maybe an issue for some, and it may be difficult for some to do, um, which I'll talk about in a second. But she said typically, when you get out of the state tourism designation as a, do a center, tourism designated center, when you get out of that, the state doesn't let you back into it. But because of the COVID issues, that's something that they have to think about and talk about, um, and potentially allowing some because of the COVID requirements that might find it very difficult to do, uh, to let them out of the agreements and put them back, let them back into the agreements once this is all passed. Because administering this might be difficult in some respects. For the city right now, the way things are set up down there and the way this was put together, the county was going to manage. The city was going to work with that person down there to let them know of, um, potential volunteer opportunities in case they weren't going to be down there, but something was going to be going on in the city. It was the, it was the county staff person's responsibility to get a hold of some volunteers that could man the store, so to speak, when they weren't going to be able to be there or weren't going to be there, especially in the evenings. Well, for us to know on that volunteer list, that would mean that we would have to basically make sure anybody on that volunteer list is either shown and given us proof of their vaccination status or given us test results on a weekly basis if they're not vaccinated. Now, that's, that's quite a bit to put on a city to maintain and, and take care of. Not that it couldn't happen, but, um, there has to be a process in place for us to do that, and there is one right now. So the tourism center down there is open year round. We all know that. It will be opening up hopefully in May again, should we, you know, sign this agreement. And if we don't, we hope Historic City Hall opens up under the county's supervision or, or manpower here come May again. But, you know, there is the possibility that, uh, we could sign into this agreement, see how it goes, and there is an out on page three. There is, either party can cancel this agreement anytime, whether without cause, by written, uh, thirty days written notice to each other. So there, you know, we could say, okay, yeah, we'll do it and then see how it goes and I'll knock that out later. Or, or the other option is not to sign the agreement and hopefully if they do cancel sending all the materials here because we're no longer a tourism center, we'll.
So at this point, the only reason to opt out because we don't know the price of the COVID test?
Well, I don't know that, I, right now, I think the price is probably free because I think there, there, anybody and everybody, as I understand, can go get a COVID test. It doesn't cost anything. This is, but at some point, I don't know if that's always going to be the case. At some point, is the government going to quit paying for all these COVID tests? I don't know.
Council strength?
I saw this in the packet and I was really shocked. And later, what's going on with the courts? You know, I mean, I.
Well, see, that's a concerning thing for us because at one, at one hand, they're telling us you cannot ask employees if they're vaccinated or not, and on the other hand, they're saying you got to get, make sure, verify they're vaccinated before they can work in this, in this center. So it's, it's all confusing us too.
Going to be the same way the DMV is run?
Pardon?
Is it going to be the same way the DMV is run?
It's coming down?
Yeah.
The DMV is.
No, I mean, this is compared, if you try to get your driver's license or get a test scheduled, you're out three or four months because, because of all this COVID restriction stuff. It's ridiculous.
Providing tests especially, now if you want to get your, your noodles and that type of thing.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would like to postpone this to the next meeting and find out two things. One, if Adel County will still staff it if we're not a part of this. And two, if their staff or if the people they hire have to be vaccinated. I mean, I mean, because, I mean, if they have, since they staff it, if, if their county employees have to be vaccinated, then it's kind of, the only issue we would have would be volunteers.
Did we have any volunteers last week?
To my knowledge, I don't know that there was anybody staffing it besides the county individuals. Or maybe, maybe there might have been some times when Dino might have been down there.
When is it due?
January first. They sent it out late, so it's not a big deal.
Waiting a month.
I think, I think they would prefer that we took our time and considered everything we want to consider before signing it or not signing it. I think that would be their basically number one concern.
Move to postpone this to the next meeting and any notes? I'll second that. Can we have a motion second? Discussion? 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 Carrying on, all in favor, signal if I'm saying aye? All the same, motion carried. Item number nine, pay equity report, which is in your packet.
Yeah, pay equity report is in your packet. Don't know if you have any questions on it. If you look at the chart, it lines up really nicely based on the wage scales that were put in place in twenty sixteen after that wage study and then, um, the COLAs and stuff that, adjustments that have been made. We anticipated that it would line up because the, the, uh, the reports or the COLAs that were sent to the state, um, were based on the council approved COLAs and scales. So, uh, we have every reason to believe that, and all the employees fell within the council approved scales, even at the library, um, the library employees adjusted for in twenty twenty.
The library, I mean, library employees or the library board approved the, to bring the COLA adjustment, the COLA up?
Yes, they did. Yeah, and even if they didn't do that, um, I still think, I still think the wages of the library employees, they had fallen within the scales that have moved based on the city council's cost of living adjustments this year. I think, I, I still think they would have passed, um, because they had fallen within The mayor and I did meet with, um, Wayne Runnigan, the library board chair. We talked a little bit about pay equity and the report and what I was seeing as a result of the report. And so there's some things that, uh, that, I know that after that meeting, they requested that I send them a copy of the city's scales.
They need the library?
The library link, yes. I think I sent it to Wayne Runnigan and to Annie, the library's scales based on the city's COLAs. So, uh, I sent that to them and I know they were, I don't, for whatever they were going to do with them, we're talking about, we have additional conversations that we have to have regarding the wage study that the council put in place in twenty sixteen and how the, um, scales at the library have changed. And it's not that it's, it's good or bad, it's just that there's some conversation that has to be had and there needs to be some justifications made before the next pay equity report because I can pretty much guarantee you the city's going to fail.
And there are four years or how many?
Three years, certainly three years.
And maybe fail it because of the library differences?
Yes. And, and, but, but having said that, there's things that, and that's, that's what I talked to Wayne about, there's things that, that we need to do between now and then to prevent that from happening. So I'll just leave it at that for now, but, and he said, he understood. It's not, it's not anything good or bad, it's just something that needs to be addressed so that we don't fail next time. So I need the council to approve the report and the submittal of the report.
How will they approve and submit all the report?
Motion second? Discussion? 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 Carrying on, all in favor, signal if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number ten is mobile home utility budget. A positive league council strength put this on the agenda last meeting, we're going to talk about it.
I did. So two meetings ago, I made a fuss about the trailer park deposit, and I didn't have a lot of information, so I asked the administration and they answered my questions. There are seventy three lots in the park. We're now holding about three thousand dollars of deposits. And I asked, what was the loss to the city last year? And it's unknown. And Danielle said she really doesn't remember losses in the last couple of years or whatever. So here's the deal. If you're charging a group of residents a fee because they live in a trailer park, it's discrimination. Anytime you treat a group of people differently, and in this case, we're charging them because they live in a park. And you explain how this all came about, but it's not right. It's, I see you're calling it a mobile home park now. We're saying we don't trust you because you live in the trailer park and some people are not, and they failed in the past, but that's clearly not the case now. So once again, I move to eliminate the deposit, return the money.
Move?
Well, one lift, four to move. And explain what's going on? Why?
Can we have a motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of seconds?
Let's discuss it first and then we can take a motion.
Let me, let me just address, the return of money part of it. We don't know when this thing was put in place. It was way before any of our time. I'm assuming that it might have been back, I don't even know when, ninety three, maybe earlier than that. But how it got to three thousand dollars and who paid that three thousand dollars, um, to some extent, the more recent ones, we may know. And, and, you know, when I say recent ones, maybe ones that have, any of them that have paid it that still live in their trailer houses or mobile homes, any one of those, there's the potential, we have to do some research on it. But there's a, I bet you a, a, a major portion or major percentage of that three thousand dollars, we have no idea who paid it. They may not, more than likely, they don't even live here anymore. So we don't know who would, who we would return it to. Now, somebody that basically moved in, set up an account two months ago that, that we could look at and, and look at paying, you know, the receipt or have, you know, have somebody come and say, you show us the receipt that you paid that deposit and we could possibly give it back to them. But there are so many people that have come and gone that don't even live here anymore that without some way of knowing who paid it by honoring, by offering us or showing us a receipt, that's the only way we can even think about refunding any of it. So refunding it is going to be very, very difficult to do.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that though.
Well, that's because we tried to talk about, talk through that a little bit after, after knowing what you were thinking, um, but that part of it would be very difficult.
Okay, so that'd be, that'd be a different situation.
Yeah.
That'd be another plan, but we cannot charge a group of people because the construction of their home is different than the other homes we own. It just can't do that.
Well, I, I just think that it's, it's, everybody, everything, you know, their situation is different from their situation, and so just to try and, um, avoid losses, we're looking at it differently, I understand that. And I don't, I don't, the council can, can do whatever they want, that's fine. I don't see it the same way you do.
But you're saying there are losses to speak of, right? So I'm, I'm not getting very far on this council wise, but it's wrong.
Is it, that money is not a set aside in a certain fund, is it?
No, it's a, it's, no, I mean, it's included in everything. It's a line item on our audit, but, yeah, no, it's not a separate fund, no.
So is there an alternative?
So I can, I can point to that thing for what I have found out since we talked about it last. I have found out that, um, we can assess mobile homes for unpaid fee bills. I was not aware of that in the past. We had never done that in the past. And so if somebody doesn't pay a bill, I now know I can assess them for that unpaid bill.
Is that if they own the mobile home?
Or?
Yes, I mean, yes, the owner of the mobile home would get assessed, just like the property owner takes a step on regular homes.
How would you learn that?
Eye contact and the thermometer.
Yeah, when you brought this whole topic up, she wanted to talk to the auditor and she did. One of the things about that though is, which we kind of talked about, because ownership of those mobile homes changed without us knowing it, if the last, if the person that basically was in that mobile home sold it and left town without paying that bill and reassessed to that mobile home, the person that bought that mobile home is getting stuck for a water bill that they have no rolling up for this.
But we're already doing that.
We're, yeah.
And in my opinion, rather than eliminating this, it should be expanded to all rentals. If you're, if you're renting a house or, or you have to figure out, beyond me, to figure out something for an apartment building as opposed to a house, but if you're renting it, I mean, we have cases in town now where a renter has run up a huge water bill and refuses to pay it and it's stuck on the homeowner that has not had any benefit or benefit from the service service, but he's getting assessed or he's getting, he's getting the nasty revenue.
Well, there, that's a little bit different in the respects that the property owner is generating revenue from that property, just like a store. A store basically is generating revenue. Somebody comes in and shovels a bunch of stuff, you know, it's, it's part of, it's part of the process of doing business.
But the owners of the mobile home park are generating revenue by, by renting, lot rents.
Lot rents, right.
So in my opinion, it should be expanded, figured out some way to expand it to all rentals so that we don't have that issue of a property owner getting stuck with their water bill. And two, it should be raised to either a hundred dollars or double the highest average monthly water bill because we wait two months before a letter is sent out before any process has started to reclaim a late water bill.
So let me ask, in the, in the case of a rental, just to kind of, so we're all thinking the same, along the same line. We're going to charge some, if, if we did this, we would charge somebody at the rental that deposit. Would it be the property owner or would it be the renter? Because right now, the, the utility bills are in the name of the property owner, they're supposed to be. So in the case of housing anyway, not so much commercial. So who pays the deposit?
I, and I guess, and I know we have case for, I want to call it cases, instances in the, in the city where you could have two rental properties side by side and in this rental property, the tenant is responsible for the water bill and in this property, the homeowner is responsible for the water bill. So, and again, I, that's an agreement the city hasn't gotten.
Right, that's, so I don't know if, I don't know the process of that would look like, whether it be that we, we, as a part of the rental license or permit that we, we, we make it a stipulation that your renter is, you know, that the renter be responsible for the water bill. And I, I, and I just thought of that here, so I'll just throw my. But still, even if it's to do that, if they skip town, it's still assessed to the property owner.
Yeah, again, yeah.
I think that's not discrimination down there. But yeah, now it's discrimination because you're putting it on rentals.
Danielle, is, is there a way of?
I think this is, we're looking for another solution to a problem that we haven't had in the shooting.
Is there a way of collecting this money from somebody that skips town?
Um, if they, if they sold their property and they skipped town.
We're speaking of the trailer park.
Oh, um, right now, no.
Again, I, I think we're losing the, you know, some of the semantics of the, the trailer court or the, I mean, if a renter leaves town, who's stuck with the, the utility bill? And it's in property. The property owner, well, but that's not the case. So do we make that the case in the instance of the owners of the trailer court?
Or trailer park, or what are you going to call it? I agree with what you were saying about the renters. I think it's kind of up to them to decide how, you know, not the renter, but.
The landlord.
The landlord, how they're going to handle this. We don't want, I don't think we need to get involved in that kind of decision at all. It's just up to them.
And I would agree with that. The best case scenario would be the landlord basically include the water in their rent, the utility in their rent. That would be the best case scenario, but that's not the way it works. There's some at me and there's most of them.
But is that correct though? If I don't pay my water bill in February, I could not, I, I won't get a letter until April about not paying my water bill.
Yeah, if you don't pay your February 15th bill on March 16th, you'll get a notice. 10 days later, you'll get another notice saying that we will shut your water off in 10 days. Then after we shut your water off, then that's when I go after collecting it.
I just think it's a problem, we're just, we're, we're ready with a solution for a problem we haven't had in the issue.
Yeah, based.
That's correct. Yeah, we haven't had an issue, we haven't lost money.
And it's discrimination. I don't, I don't see there's discrimination.
Yes.
But based on what we've talked about, we are complicating it more and I would say if you want to fix something that probably isn't broken, eliminate it.
I think it's irresponsible, I mean, I don't know. Personally, I think it's irresponsible to let, or to, to, to risk having the rates go up across the board for people not paying a lot of bills. That's why I think it should be rental wide rather than. Do we know what other cities do that have mobile home parks?
I, I haven't, I haven't researched any, I didn't think of checking with that, I can do that.
Do you want to do that?
No, I don't.
Can we revisit this again?
If you do that, Danielle, we'll check on that, see how the community handles. Okay, moving on, city hall personnel, done.
Yeah, just an update, I wanted to let you guys know that we're still in the application and the interview process. So until we're done with that, we don't have a lot of interviews.
We're still looking for people at the leadership also.
Yes.
And the department.
We had full staff from the police department.
I took her, we're good.
Police departments, I think, were, um, yeah, were pretty good. Well, what I mean by that, we had a, we had a part timer that did leave, so Jeff's down to one part timer. Just really with, with that, it just depends on the number of hours that the part timer is willing to give. It's a conversation that I think has to be had, whether we look at, if Jeff is still having to spend because of vacations, because of officers taking time off or whatever, sick whatever, quarantining, if Jeff's still having to do substantial amount of patrolling, then I think it's time to think about, do we need a fifth full-time officer and get rid of the part-time department altogether? Because the part-timers right now are not giving us anything.
I thought we had, we had decided as council that Jeff was going to be an office chief and.
Yeah, he is, yeah.
Are we in that direction?
He is, and ever since that decision was made, there's been trying to get him fully staffed and now with the hiring of the last two individuals, he's got four full timers. And they're, they should be out on their own pretty much all the time now. So Jeff's, Jeff's patrolling hours should substantially drop if not totally be eliminated other than going out there just to, to have a presence, so to speak. I have to check with Jeff and find out how many hours a week he's patrolling and then I could have a better answer for him. Because if he's still patrolling, you know, quite a bit of hours, then my question is
Okay, anything else on item 131?
No.
If not, item number 12, ministry report, done.
Since the last meeting, we had a department head meeting and I kind of alluded to the knowledge department has to be briefed on the, on the water being read too. Pretty because the council package together and working with Danielle, the agenda was a little bit lighter this time. Then with the township and county regarding the 430th Street Utility Project. And then I met with the city attorney to review that, the county project with extending the water sewer out to that area. We're going to need to have a utility extension agreement put in place and a construction agreement put in place for that because we are basically going to be disturbing the county side of that roadway and so we need to get those things in place. I attended the safety committee meeting. I met with the mayor, Apex Engineering and Superintendent Ron Olson to discuss different federal funding opportunities. We called that meeting, or the mayor actually did, because with the art funds coming down from the federal level, we know that a substantial amount of them dollars are supposedly supposed to be allocated towards water sewer infrastructure replacement. And so we want to make sure that our engineers, as we're talking about this 2024 project and other projects within the city that, our engineers are paying attention to the potential applications that could be filed on behalf of the city to give dollars to help us pay for, especially the water and sewer infrastructure. We know that that right now is going to be costing the city anywhere from, depending on the COVID effect, six to eight million dollars is going to be our share water sewer street. Well, anything we can get from, from the Build Back Better Plan would be helpful to buy that down. So we had a discussion about that. As Trevor alluded to, I have revised the township fire service agreements in preparation to milling them out. They will go out probably the next day after the annual meeting. So hopefully the townships will, we always get them to them in time for their annual meetings in March so that they can address them, act on them and hopefully get them back to us as soon as possible so that we know everybody's on board, continuing with the fire service agreement, which is going to affect, by the way, on January 1st of 2023. So they got lots of time to consider the impact. I had communications with the MPCA regarding the completion and hopefully upcoming submittal of our chloride, well, I did submit the chloride waiver eligibility form and variance request forms for the chloride stuff that we have going on. They're also expecting us to get a chloride variance schedule and reduction plan to them by the end of this month. And so I am, I have scheduled a meeting with the mayor, councilman Foster, and also people's service because we need to go over that and discuss it so I can possibly have something submitted. If we don't get something submitted to the MPCA by the end of the month, I have a feeling the MPCA is going to kind of get heavy handed with us. So not that that's scaring me, but we kind of put it off. They, I originally said I'd like to get something to them by the end of this January, it didn't happen because of pay equity reporting and other things that I needed to get done. So they weren't real happy that I wanted to push it off, but they, they allow us to have it in February. Also, every year, I get a census bureau boundary adjustment survey, they call it VAS, and it's something that happens every year where the, the census bureau reaches out to all cities in the country wanting to know is there been any, any changes to our borders. Obviously, the amount of land area and everything else plays into the formula of how many dollars states get and cities get, but we don't get any dollars necessarily from the federal government. But they want to know if your borders expanded. It's, it's usually, it's been just real simple, nothing's changed, they're just going back. But this year, because of the annexation on the Northwest, it was more involved and, and you know, so they have a online system now that they've developed where you don't have to be a GIS engineer and work with shape files and everything else to show the change in our borders. But it used to be, the olden days, they would send you a packet and that packet has a map of Pelican Rapids, our borders already, and I would take a red pen, pencil and I would basically draw in the new area, pull it back up, ship it back to them and then they would change their maps down there. They don't do that, you know, that seemed to be the easier way to do it. So with their online software now, you create, I have to create an account, go in and pull up our existing shape file for the city and then redraw that shape using their, you know, simplified way of messing with GIS. And then, once I get done with that, I export our new shape to a file that that program creates. Then I have to go and create an account to a special federal program that allows you to upload securely, upload, it's called SWIM, it's an acronym for this, the security whatever module. And I have to then upload that file into that and we're done. Well, so in a sense, I'm training myself on how to use their new GIS system and then training myself on how to upload this, create a file and upload this to their SWIM system. Took me probably half a day to figure out how to do all this stuff and then, if not more, and then create the file, upload it and be done with it. So worked on that. Ultimately, this is why I couldn't get the thing done with MPC, with the MPC anytime. We reviewed job applications, set and started the interviewing process. So I also worked on and submitted the pay equity report. And then also, every year, I have to do a PFA compliance report, annual compliance report with PFA, which is, is answering, answering, surveying questions on every single one of our loans that we have out there and we've got probably a half a dozen or so, same form, I don't know why they don't simplify it so that the change, the answers to the questions don't change. So why not just send us the same one, similar to census and say, if anything's changed, fill out a new one, but otherwise, if this looks good, just tell us it's okay. But they don't, you have to redo the forms every year. So I have to then reach one of the loans that we have. And then there's also one that I have to calculate out how much of our affluent in gallons worth, and I work with people's services, they, they do send a report to the council every month, so it's nice to get that, sort legs a little bit by a month. But I have to use that to calculate how much we have to set aside for future projects, basically put it in reserves for the wastewater plant. I tried to get, because of our balances in our wastewater account, I requested the PFA to allow us to cut down the calculated, the modifier, the calculation so that we can set aside less than what they're requiring, so that we can hold higher balances. Because this money, we can't use for anything unless PFA approves it and it's got to be for capital only. Well, I requested for them to lower the formula number one so it's not as much, but I also requested that they allow us to use some, some of this money for operations in case our balances get too low for our operating, that we could just use this to fill that gap until our rate increases would, would kind of cover it. And they denied it. They said, no, this can only be used for capital. So I tried to get them to understand, based on your formula, over the 20-year span of this, of this loan. we're going to have way more money tied up in, in waiting for our next capital project and nothing to operate on. But they don't see it that way, so we'll see where that goes. Anyway, so I calculated that out, I, I have yet to, to get that final report to them, but that's what I'm working on their compliance package or submitting. And then obviously came and drafted up notices and, and stuff to go up to the, to, for the, for the water main break, sending notices to the networks, I don't know if you guys heard any of them, I know KDRR did put out that boil water advisory. I did hear that one at, I think, six and nine. I didn't hear anything on WDAI or KDOLI, but send them to them manually. And then the mayor and I have met twice now with a potential developer and those discussions will continue on. Hopefully, by all indications, we might have something to talk to council about next, after next meeting. Good news, other things could happen. So that one.
Thank you. Item number 13 is a mayor report. Motion either of the two, we talked about, Don and I met with Leonard Ward, President Wayne Runnigan regarding pay equity on January 27th. Also, I met with Administrator Solga, Brian Olson, Bob Schule, one of Apex Engineering regarding the utility extension into the housing industrial park where the new county garage will be located. Met on February 3rd and also today with a developer which Don mentioned that truly inserts in Pelican Rapids and doing some housing here. Met with Danielle and some of the fire department yesterday regarding Pelican Rapids Fire Department Elite Association meeting, which Trevor reported on this evening. And I met yesterday with Don regarding the agenda for this afternoon's city council meeting. Seeing no other business on the agenda, is there a motion to a second? Motion second, all favors, signify and say aye. And propose the same, meeting adjourned.